I'll call the meeting to order, please. I have a statement to read. It's the, obviously, the right to know law. You know, as chairman of the select board due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis in accordance with Governor Sanino's emergency order number 12 pursuant to the executive order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency code, excuse me, emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting, all members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through Zoom's platform, and the public has account to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, to participate in meetings through dialing the following phone number 1-646-558-8656 into entering meeting ID 81119797475 and passcode 534667, or by entering the same information through Zoom as B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing that meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom and instructions provided on the Town of Lee's website, lee new hampshire.org. C, providing the mechanism public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-659-5414. And D, adjourning the meeting and the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled to another date or another time. Please note that all of the votes that were taken during this recording shall be done by roll call vote. And let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So I have the Board of Selectmen introduce themselves. Mr. Bugby?
Scott Bugby, nobody's in the room.
Mr. Brown?
Gary Brown, nobody's in the room.
Mr. Lacorice, nobody's in the room. Okay, let us proceed with the agenda. Steve Boach, Public Works Manager.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
So I am coming before you to ask about bringing some surplus equipment that we've found in the transfer station that we no longer use anymore to the state auction, try to auction it off so we could sell it, create some more space. So one of the bigger pieces is that broom that goes up in front of the Bobcat. They've upgraded since that one, so we have another one that's all self-contained, so the material gets picked up, pushed into the bucket. So that one has just been mothballed in the back 40 for a little while, and it's, we don't really have any use for it, so I wondered if we could bring it there and sell it. And then, not in the pictures, we found one the other day. It's an old loading dock that is still on the original pallet, so it's like rubber bumpers and it runs off chains, and it's a dock that goes into the back of a 18-wheeler so you can drive equipment in and out of it, and we don't, we haven't used that. That one I think was bought when the building was brand new.
Discussion from the boards?
Steve, can you explain how the auction works? Do we bring stuff up there, and if it sells, we get some of the proceeds? What percentage is that? If it doesn't sell, then what happens?
So we bring it up there, and it sells, and we get, I don't know the percentage of the proceeds because I can't talk to anybody, there's no one there, but I'm pretty sure from what I've heard in the past, it's upwards of 80% of the proceeds come back to us. And if it doesn't sell, we just have to go back up and get it. There's other ways to do it. We can put out a thing and take RFPs and seal bids for it too, if you'd rather go that way. I just, a lot of people go to that auction, so I figured you'd get more, you'd get more eyes on it up there than you would if we tried to just post it on the internet.
When is the next auction?
Well, it should have been now, like some, at some point in the next couple of weeks, but they're not doing it, so the next auction's going to be in the fall.
I see.
Unless they come up with one and they all of a sudden want to do it in June, because I know they got a lot of stuff sitting up there they need to get rid of right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, any comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Steve, is, as I look at this, is this piece of equipment serviceable, or is it a wreck?
It'll run. It just needs a hydro, a couple hydraulic fittings on it and some pieces they've robbed off of it over the years, and you could get it to run.
Okay, so there is going to be some pieces missing from it?
Yeah, there's some hydraulic fittings missing that they've taken to make other things run over the years.
Okay, all right.
My comment is, is that if the Public Works Manager feels it should go, it should go. Therefore, I move to authorize the Public Works Manager to sell circular sweeper attachment at the New Hampshire State Auction. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I ask a question in terms of, Steve, you mentioned some other piece of equipment. This only authorizes you to sell the sweeper. Wasn't there something else?
There's a loading dock set. I don't know how else to describe it. It's the bumpers that you, a big wheel, a big truck would back into, and it's the dock that would pop up and go into the back of the truck and set down, so there's no gap. It's just a continuous surface to drive in and out of the back of the truck.
May I ask, John, could you entertain the amendment to include this other piece of equipment at the same time?
I'll make that as a friendly amendment. Roll call vote, Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Lacorice, yes. Motion carries.
And I just got a couple, I wanted to ask a couple other things that aren't on there. A couple months ago, you guys voted to let me buy three shipping containers from S&amp;J, and with, we finally got everything ready to be able to take them, and I was wondering if I could still purchase those from the trust fund. With the climate that we're in now, I figured it was better to ask than to just do.
Well, it's my, my sense, it just is, this selectman talking, we should move ahead. We don't want to be frozen in ice on a lot of these purchases. Sooner or later, the pandemic will subside to some extent, so I don't want to be caught in the future by not having proper equipment to do our job, so I'd like to move forward, but I'll take opinion from the other select people. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby?
Steve, how much is it?
I think it was 10, a little over 10,000, and we got, the reason I didn't buy them also right away is we also had a grant that I wrote, and we got approved for the grant too, for around $2,000 toward it. So the price would actually drop to around 8,500, I think.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Do we need a motion, Julie, or can we send certiorum budget?
No, that's, yeah, that's, it was previously approved, so you're okay.
Okay, Steve, you're ready to go on that one.
All right, and then, this one could wait longer if you wanted to go that route, but it's the time of the year where we stripe the roads, we paint the lines on the roads, and last year we paid $4,055 to paint our lines on the roads. Currently, the lines are still there because we didn't really plow all that much this past winter, we had a decent winter, but if I don't paint them now, and then I can't, and then I, for some reason, I can't paint them in the fall, by next spring, we probably won't have any lines on our roads, they'll all get worn off, and then it turns into a safety issue, especially on the curvier roads like Snow Road. So it's currently in my budget, I have the money to be able to pay to stripe. I just would, again, with the directive, just try to save money. I didn't know if that was something I could do now, or you want me to wait?
I look at this as a safety issue, and I'd rather have you move forward with the striping.
Okay.
However, I'll take information. How about Mr. Bugby?
Steve, how much is it again? You said 6,000?
No, last year was 4,055.
Okay, I'm fine.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Okay, you have permission to move forward.
All right, and then the last one, and that wasn't brought to my attention until the other day, but there, on the Fourth of July, it falls on a Saturday this year, and all the towns around us and transfer stations have been talking, and out of the 25 that have responded, 22 of them are closing for the day, and three of them are paying double time to their guys on the Fourth of July. So it was, I was going to ask if we closed the dump on Saturday, the Fourth of July, and give the guys the holiday off.
I approve that. However, Selectman Brown?
Yes.
Selectman Bugby?
I approve it as long as he changes it from dump to transfer station.
Transfer station, sorry.
Jeez, I'm fine with it.
That's a good call, Mr. Bugby.
Yeah. We'll have to put, we'll have to put that in his review.
I love it. We're okay on that, I guess.
All right, that's all I had. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Steve. Next item, business, Mr. Bugby, you have the floor.
Can we do B first?
Sure can.
B's easier. We got, we did a assessment for the Parish House, and we submitted a grant to the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance, and we were awarded a sum of $4,500, and we got the money in, so the board needs to accept the money or not accept the money. It's up to the board. So I moved to accept the grant money in the amount of $4,500, said funds to be deposited into the general fund.
Second. Mr. Bugby?
Yes. Any discussions?
I didn't think there would be. Mr. Brown?
You can deal the rest of it, John.
Okay. Mr. Bugby votes, yes. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Lacorice, yes. Motion carries. That was the easy one. Thank you.
Yeah, that was the easy one. The, the second one is, one of the things that we kind of put on hold because we haven't been meeting is the whole discussion. As we know, the Warren article for the Town Center project did not pass, so I guess the question from the TCVC is, how do we proceed? Do we proceed at all? What do we do? And I know this is kind of an open-ended discussion, but if we want to move forward, the direction, the TCVC needs some kind of direction from the board in terms of how to proceed, if to proceed at all, so.
I'll take input at this time. Mr. Brown, you got any comments?
I don't have an answer for it.
I don't have an answer for it either, but at the same time, Julie, was there ever a sunset clause in TCVC?
I think there was. I don't recall the date off the top of my head. I suspect it would have been maybe July of 2021?
I think it's this year, Julie.
Is it? Okay.
I think it's June 30th of 2020, so.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I kind of like to see a plan for the town hall, period, to start with. At one time, we, we voted, and we said the town hall really gets the priority for anything that's going to be built, refurbished, whatever, whatever, and it keeps falling down to the bottom of the list for some reason. We don't even talk about it, and I'd really like to see a plan to get the town hall refurbished.
Well, the assessment gives us that particular plan, Mr. Brown, so we know how much that would cost. It's logistics of getting the people that are in there now out. Where are we going to put them?
Well, that's part of the, that's part of the plan.
Well, we're all, we're all home now. I guess we could just keep on working remotely.
Well, Linda's office is still there, so, but yes, but there's some information that we got in terms of moving them to the Market Basket Plaza. We know the cost for those particular things, so I think the board needs to say, if that's what you want us to do, we can flush out that particular plan. We know how much doing the building is. We can scope out a schedule for that, but we need some kind of direction from the board on how you want to proceed.
I have a couple of questions. Actually, I'm enthusiastic about what comments that Selectman Brown had said. You know, obviously, we need to revitalize the existing town hall, and also, didn't I understand at one time there might be a possibility of getting funds to help us with that? Is that right, Mr. Bugby?
Yes, that is a possibility. It's, the town hall would be eligible. It's on the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance Historic Register list, so it is available, and it would score, but not as high as the Parish House would, but it would score. You would get something. And that particular deadline for this year's award is end of this month. So that's a little bit too short.
A little bit cold.
Yeah, so you'd have to wait until next year, but it is possible, it is possible. So, and they, they provide up to 50%. So if your project was $400,000, they would supply, could supply up to 200,000. This last particular year was very competitive, so people weren't necessarily getting everything they asked for. So, you know, you could get up and, you know, even if you got like a third of it, maybe, or a quarter, it's still something.
Exactly. What was the estimated price of the assessment?
I knew you were going to ask that. I don't have that off the top of my head. It was around 300,000, and that's to basically update all the utilities and things like that, heating, cooling, refurbishment, redoing the floor, just making it so that it brings it up to standards. There's certain things that the Preservation Historic Register, somebody's got a dog. I don't know if the dog liked my comment or not. There's certain things you couldn't do to the building, but those are kind of limited, but you'd have to come back if you wanted us to turn it back into offices, because the plan right now is to turn it into a public meeting space. So we'd have to relook at that a little bit.
That was what I was getting to. I'm glad you mentioned it, because if we're going to focus on town hall, as Mr. Brown suggested, it was assessed for something entirely different, so the TCVC would have to come back with a plan of how to handle it, so there would be some privacy for town administrator and some of the other people that exist in the, in the town hall it is today. I, I am enthusiastic about this. I'd like the TCVC to move forward to reassess the existing town hall as an office building and to look for ways, as you maybe just suggested, Mr. Bugby, temporarily housing the employees at some of the sites, or if they can stay home. That's an interesting concept at this point.
That's an idea.
Yeah, I'm enthusiastic about it, so I'd like to move forward with that suggestion. Reason I asked about the sunset is I want to make sure you have enough time to respond to it. I don't want it to, we might have to extend the sunset clause for the TCVC.
Yeah. Well, the, the other thing, just to let you know, the TCVC had six members, two of them have resigned, so we'd probably look for somebody else to join us, but definitely we'd have to extend their particular deadline in terms of their, their appointments.
I agree. Mr. Brown, what do you think of this conversation? Are you in tune with it?
That's fine. I think it's, I think it's great if we go forward with it. We need to change their charge, if you would, to focus on the town hall, et cetera.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Bugby, can you refocus that charge and have it reviewed by town administrator and bring it forward for the next meeting?
Well, I'll have to have a conversation with the rest of the members.
Absolutely.
Sounds good.
See if you can get some other volunteers.
Yeah, well, the last time we did it, we targeted people, so we asked specific people to join a particular group, so I think that's probably why we, we do it again that way, so.
Sounds like a plan. It's about time. We tried a couple of times, and maybe this final time it'll work. Actually, I'm just thinking about where we're going with this. I don't see this, obviously not as cautiously as the other buildings we proposed, but we might have a reasonable chance at this time. All right, anything else, Mr. Bugby?
No, thank you, sir.
John?
Please.
If I could?
Yes, you can.
Just, I'd like to address the possibility of moving temporarily into another facility. My concern with up at the Market Basket is when the gym and the other places up there that have been closed reopen, parking up there is next to nothing. You know, thinking of our elderly community possibly having the park at the far east end of the parking lot and having to walk all, all that way. I know that the old Profit Tools building at S&amp;J, I don't know if it's still open, but I know it was available. Jim Daly was willing to work with the town on that, and it's already partitioned off into individual offices. You wouldn't have to do anything like that as you would at Market Basket. Just a thought.
No, I think he is good thoughts. The TCVC should be open to all considerations at this time. I agree. Thank you. Let's move on to next item. Mr. Chief Drunsfield, you have the floor.
Thank you. So we've been having issues with our copier for quite some time, and we're hoping to be able to put it off till later in the year, but unfortunately, it's taking longer and longer for it to make individual copies. If we send something from the computer to the copier to be printed, it can take up to upwards of minutes, and the amount of things that we print, it's quite a bit of time during the day. So Robin got a lot of quotes, and we talked with Steve Gagnon, and you'll see, there's a quote from Connected Shop Office Pro, Office Technologies, and it's a Brother Workhorse, and it's $5,689 with a $50 a month service fee, but there are no overage fees. In other words, if we go over a certain amount of printing, we don't get charged, and, and that won't increase. And in the conversations we've had with, with the different vendors, we like that one, and it's also very highly recommended by Steve Gagnon. We, so we'd like permission to go ahead and order that in. Now, our current printer would be perfect for the fire department. They don't do a lot, but it has, still has a scanning capabilities, and right now, the fire department has to come over here if they need to scan any documents to send out. I've talked to Chief Nemeth about that.
Comments from the boards? Mr. Bugby?
Where'd he go?
I'm here. Sorry, I muted my, my microphone, and I forgot I did it, so.
Thought he fell out of his chair.
No, I didn't fall out, no. Is there a maintenance contract on it at the moment, chief?
On the one we have now?
Correct.
No, it's, it's been paid as we go, I believe, Julie, correct?
Well, there is a maintenance agreement, yes.
So is there a cost associated with that, Julie?
Yes.
So is the fire department interested in terms of taking that particular cost on, or how, how would they deal with that?
I did talk to Scott about that briefly. I don't know if he's, if he's here.
He's muted, but.
Yeah, he's here, he's here.
I would just have to look at that cost, the monthly cost, and make sure that we have it in the current budget, but the one that he's purchasing now is only $50 a month, so I think we could easily work that into our budget.
Okay, I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
All right. And therefore, I move to authorize the purchase of the Brother Workhorse Center, excuse me, copier through the Connected Office Technologies, the amount not to exceed $5,689, and to expend funds from the police department fiscal year 20 operational, operating budget for this purchase. Do I rescind it?
Second.
Further discussion?
No.
Wow, you really got this down. That's pretty good. I'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Lacorice, yes. Motion carries. There you go, chief.
Thank you.
Anything else, chief?
That's it.
Thank you. Town Administrator, Julie Glover?
So, as you should know from the many, many, many emails that we've received and information and some clarification, the town has been given funding up to $104,310 from the Coronavirus Relief Fund grant. This is a reimbursement, so they're not going to just send us a check. We have to apply for the money. There are deadlines, there are rules. I will tell you, and I don't know whether any of you read through the entire grant agreement, there's a lot of things in there that I have questions about and other municipalities have questions about. So NHMA is in the process of gathering all of the questions and are attempting to get answers, but in the meantime, if we want to be able to file for reimbursement, the board has to accept the money, and I believe that we have to submit our first request for reimbursement by June 1st.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
Give me example of what these funds are being reimbursed for.
For example, we had to purchase an additional laptop in order to allow for remote working by one of the employees. I believe that that is a reimbursable expense. I think that some or all of our cleaning products, our additional cleaning products that we've had to purchase because of this is a reimbursable expense. After that, I have to be honest, it gets a little fuzzy unless either of the two chiefs or Karen Rossi want to chime in based on anything that they've heard. Again, as I said, we're still in the process of trying to get answers to questions.
So this is the maximum amount that we could ask for, doesn't mean we'd get it, correct?
Correct. This is the maximum amount of funds that we are going to get, and on a related matter, which is further in the agenda, the stipends for first responders would be reimbursed, I believe, out of this amount.
So that's.
There's a list there of allowable expenses, John, so there's a whole bunch of stuff.
Right.
Yeah, I saw it. I just want to, I'm glad Julie made that comment about the, you know, Chief Drunsfield and Nemeth in the sense of, we're trying to get as much as we can, obviously.
Right. One of the allowable expenses is increased welfare costs, but one of the questions associated with that is, for example, let's suppose we have $10,000 budgeted for rent that we typically never use in any given year. This year, we might use it and exceed it, but do we have to wait until we exceed the $10,000, or can we offer a proof that we are spending more money than typical because of COVID-19? So that's a question. One of the other ones you'll see is if it comes to it that we have to get tax anticipation notes, the interest would be reimbursable. I did receive an email from Don Quigley, who I believe is listening in on the call regarding elections. We can expect that we might have to spend additional funds for the elections in order to provide social distancing and all of the things that we need in order to make that safe. A little hard to know, because again, this is the, with this round of funding, is the only money we're going to get, so we have to anticipate that we're going to also be spending money, you know, in the fall for COVID-related items. I see Mr. Nemeth. Chief Nemeth has a question?
Please.
I just want to jump in from the EMD's point and the fire chief's standpoint. I've been working with Alex, our state rep from the EOC, about all these grants. There are numerous grants out there. Me, Julie, and Karen and Chief Drunsfield are definitely working through them. There's plenty of questions. Some of this is brand new to all of us, including the state, and then other ones, like the And then other ones, uh, like the PA FEMA grant, they're kind of holding it like they have in the past with winter storms. So, um, when I talked to Alex from the state, he said that we can apply for anything and everything. Um, whether it be equipment or salary or anything like that. And if one of the grants doesn't cover it, then we can try a different grant. So, um, as of right now, I don't think there's huge numbers in the spending that we've had. But, um, as time allows, maybe into the fall, if we spend more money, there's definitely going to be different avenues that we can reach out for that grant money.
Isn't there a call today also about grant monies?
I think it's tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Two o'clock.
So, let me see if I can get my handle on this. This is the amount that we can, don't necessarily get, but we can apply for. We have to anticipate what we might be spending down the road. But who approves this? So what if we ask for monies down the road anticipation, but we don't use that? Do we have to give the money back?
Well, no, this is a reimbursement. So in other words, and it's done in chunks. So if you can see right here, you apply by June first for things between March and the end of April. By July fifteenth, it's May first to June thirtieth. By September fifteenth, it's July first to August thirty-first. Um, so it's, we're just getting reimbursed. It's things that we've already spent money on.
And what's the, um, ending date of such possible spending?
Well, this says August thirty-first, 2020. Although I know that there's a December deadline for something too. So we're supposed to, oh, here it is. We're supposed to estimate the additional expenses that we're going to have through December thirty-first. And then we might get additional money after August thirty-first. I mean, honestly, if your heads are spinning from this, we get it because we've been trying to make sense of all of this for quite a while.
And does it have, does it have the possibility that if, uh, fire and police and other departments have to do overtime because of COVID issues? Is that reimbursable?
Um, Chief Nemeth could probably answer better than I. I think that's reimbursable out of FEMA.
The overtime's reimbursable, but that's out of the PA grant. And that's kind of like we're talking about. That's what we're trying to figure out with all these different grants. Um, the fund that Julie's talking about and the PA through FEMA, the public assistance grants is for reimbursable, uh, reimbursable things. There's only one grant out there that's anything for the future spending. Um, and it's nothing really that we can go for. So these are all reimbursable.
Chief Drunsfield?
Yes.
Well, I have a comment. The only, I read through most of this along with some other documents that, that I saw relative to the reimbursement. Julie mentioned that some of them were kind of fuzzy. I think it goes beyond the word fuzzy. Um, there's a lot of strings going on and there is a lot of gray about whether it would be applicable to, to certain, uh, departments, et cetera. So all I'm trying to say is we need to be really careful about how we manage this, this whole reimbursement program. Cause it's, it's, it's going to have a lot of strings. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot of people that are going to come in and want to see this or see that as far as audits, et cetera.
Yes, they, they absolutely have the ability to audit us. Whether they will end up auditing all two hundred and thirty-four municipalities in the state of New Hampshire remains to be seen. I did, um, have some correspondence with Primex. Um, I don't know if you caught the indemnification language, the insurance and bonding language. And then even under section nine, if, if we submit and if we get money for something that maybe then they determine isn't reimbursable, there's language in there about how they can withhold other money. So I don't know that that would ever be triggered, but I just want to make sure you understand that there's language in the agreement. For example, if we, if we don't dot all the i's and cross all the t's under this, perhaps there's some chance that highway grant money will be held up because we did something wrong under this grant. So Mr. Brown is right. There's, there's a lot to be cautioned with, caution, have caution about. Again, going tying this to the next item or one of the next items on the agenda relative to the stipends. This is the fund that the stipends are coming out of. So if the board wants to move forward with awarding or accepting the funds or the reimbursement for the stipend, you also have to accept this money.
Um, let me be clear about this particular thing. We're not buying stuff just to buy stuff. We're buying stuff to, to get us through this particular situation. So it's not like the chief's going to go out and buy this thing just because he wants to have it. He's buying it because he needs it to provide services and stuff like that. So I don't see, you know, if they come back and say, no, you can't, we won't reimburse for this particular item. We needed that particular item anyway, so we're going to have to buy it anyways. So I don't see any downside in terms of that.
Yeah, I just.
I'm in favor of doing this.
I, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware, if you had read through the whole agreement, uh, what the, what the language is.
What the purchases we're making, we probably would not be making if it weren't for this crisis.
That's what I would expect to be is the crisis is driving this. So I, Chief Drunsfield, I didn't get a chance to have your response. So if there's required, there's overtime that's required because of the virus situation, that's reimbursable, correct?
Through the PA grant, correct.
Correct, okay. Cause I was thinking about this as the university is struggling with whether they'll be face-to-face opening, but I think the president has said they will be face-to-face opening come, uh, this fall semester. And who knows what things could happen down the road. So I want to make sure some, since, uh, at least we don't have to worry about Cinco de Mayo though. That was a win there.
Durham is still busy.
Yeah. Durham is very busy. That's why I like staying in late, but anyway, that's a different story. I think we heard enough conversation on this. Therefore I move to accept and expend up to a hundred and four thousand, three hundred and ten dollars of coronavirus relief fund grant monies under a New Hampshire RSA twenty-one dash P colon forty-three in accordance with the terms, conditions and guidance established and to authorize a town administrator to execute any and all grant agreements, applications, documents, et cetera, in connection with this grant. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
No.
Hearing none at this point, Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Lacorice, yes, motion carries. Thank you on that one.
Okay. Give me a minute. I have to scroll through a lot of pages.
There is a lot of pages.
There was a lot in that last set of pages.
A lot of pages. Uh, and obviously as we get answers to questions, I'll keep forwarding them to the select board and all the other department heads. All right. Onto the next item. Uh, executive order twenty-five, um, was issued by the governor beginning of April. Uh, it too raised an awful lot of questions. Um, but based on all of the information that we've gathered from NHMA, uh, attorney, I think it's Bernard Campbell. Linda could correct me if I'm wrong about his name. Um, and our own attorney at Dunning, Tucker and Chandela. This does not prohibit us from moving forward with the leaning process. That had been one of the questions. Um, it does prohibit us from taking any properties by deed. It allows the select board to grant a blanket abatement for interest charged on property taxes. Still seems a little fuzzy to me as to whether that is just, for example, the twenty-twenty taxes or, um, interest that might still be owed on taxes going back to prior years. Um, but this is, this is not mandatory. So it's entirely up to the select board whether you want to allow this or whether you just want to continue with the abatement process as we normally do. And if someone wants to put in for an abatement, they can, and the board would consider it kind of under their normal course of operation.
Comment and discussion from the boards?
Um, I would be in favor of this year, but not previous years.
So when you say this year, do you mean a blanket abatement or people would still have to apply?
Well, it says it's a blanket. Every, you gotta treat everybody the same. So it would be a blanket for two thousand and twenty. I'm not in favor of any previous years in terms of being in any interest on those.
Well, but the board doesn't have to do it in a, as a blanket abatement. You still can do it by application. It just means that you have to treat everybody the same within that process. So just as an example, if you set the criteria that show us documentation that shows that you lost your job because of COVID-19 and then we will grant you this interest abatement for two thousand and twenty. That would be treating everybody the same.
And what's the timeliness of this? Do we have to do this now? Can we do it later on?
Well, the board always has the ability to grant abatements.
I understand that, but underneath this executive order, excuse me, emergency order twenty-five.
Yeah, and I mean, one might imagine that these executive orders are going to expire at some point. But to be honest, I don't know. There may even be, to be honest with you, an expiration date on executive order twenty-five.
Uh, my particular concern is, you know, we will not know until tax payments start coming in in July. Is this going to be, you know, like five people are going to, you know, having issues or is it going to be twenty-five hundred people?
Right.
I, I don't know.
We have.
I'd rather not do abatements for twenty-five hundred people, you know, that's a little bit too much. Though my concern is I don't know how, how bad this is going to be in terms of people not being able to pay those particular taxes.
Well, it's an interesting concept. I'm not enthusiastic about this. I, you know, um, I'd rather follow our traditional process as we've been doing it before. I don't suspect twenty-five hundred people come in. But I also understand is that many people who, you know, hold mortgages have their taxes built into their mortgage payment. So that's going to be a direct payment to the town. Uh, so the, will, won't be any interest issues that are associated with that to begin with.
And Julie has some numbers on that in terms of what percentage comes in.
It's forty percent. Typically forty percent of the taxes that we receive come from people who haven't escrowed.
Yeah. So for a seven million dollar tax, tax bills that go out, we're going to get forty percent of that, you know, just because they've already escrowed it. But what about the remaining, you know? I don't know. I, I would like to put this off until we know more. Uh, like maybe to sometime in July, maybe middle to end of July, if that's possible.
Um, maybe the, um, tax collector can comment on, uh, where she's at with the lean process and the tax billing.
Um, as far as tax billing goes, as soon as the warrant is signed, which my understanding is that's going to be done today. I'm either going to run the tax bills tonight or tomorrow morning, and then they should be out or they will be out, um, by Monday, uh, next week. Okay. I'm getting them out as soon as I can. Um, in regards to the leaning, um, I had started the, I had sent the original letter out. There's a process that has to be met certain timeframes, um, when we send notification. Um, I had started that the, um, first of March, however, with COVID, I, I stopped. Um, however, in the, um, executive order twenty-five, it does not specify or it does not indicate that we have to stop the leaning process. So I was going to start the lean process again, send out the first notification. There's a, a letter that has to go out. Um, um, first class. Then approximately thirty-plus days after that, the certified letter will go out to the, um, residents. And then at least thirty days or so after the certify is when the properties will be leaned. Um, all of the, the leaning by statute and the has, and the governor has not changed this by statute has to be done by September thirtieth. If it is not, if the properties that have not paid their taxes in fall for, um, two thousand and nineteen, um, if the lien is not placed by September thirtieth of all year, it can't, they, the properties cannot be leaned. So, um, like I said, the executive order and we got, um, clarification or opinion from our Bernie, uh, Bernie Campbell, um, the tax collector's, um, attorney that, um, stated that the governor has not said that that is state. Um, so we can go forward with the leaning, which, um, I, I think we should.
Point of clarification. So the interest that we would be allowing to abate, that would come out of a hundred and four thousand?
Uh, nah, I don't think so. I'm sorry. I, I didn't understand, hear the question.
Yeah, I was asking a question about the CARES Act, a hundred and four thousand the town might be able to receive. Would the, if we abate the interest with, and would that money come out of the hundred and four thousand dollars?
Uh, I don't think so. I know that we can't use it to make up revenue and that would be lost revenue.
I kind of agree with, uh, Mr. Bugby about holding off on this. I think it's until you have a little bit more information. Mr. Brown, you have a comment?
No, I agree with, uh, what Scott said. I think we should not rush into this. Hold off on it a little bit till we know more.
Okay, I guess we got direction at this one.
Can I ask Linda two questions, please?
Please, go ahead.
Linda, when will the tax bills be due? Uh, July first?
July first, uh, I'm pretty sure it's a Wednesday. We are.
Yeah.
We are off then. Um, yes, they will be July first.
Can you also give us any idea in terms of how many, uh, people or how many properties, I guess, are out there that people are not paying their taxes? The last time, like last year, I don't remember. It was like thirteen, fourteen. Uh, what's the number of properties on that list that you have now?
You mean to be deeded or to be moved?
To be leaned. What's the, what's the list? Is it grown? Is it the same? Is it less?
I, I'm, I'm not in the office, so I can't, uh, but off the top of my head, I'd say it's probably about the same.
Okay.
However, uh, either tonight or tomorrow, I can answer that question when I go into the office.
That'd be great. If you could forward the answer to Julie so she could send it to us or send it to us directly either way, that would be great. Thank you.
Any more discussion on this item? Okay, Julie, back.
All right, so the next item, um, as we've already talked about a bit, is the first responder stipends from the CARES Act coronavirus relief fund, uh, grant funds. Again, a lot of questions about this. I think, I think most of the questions that we had regarding this, uh, have been answered. Generally speaking, it's for police officers, firefighters, that includes volunteers and call firefighters. Full-time employees get three hundred dollars a week. Part-time employees get a hundred and, up to a hundred and fifty dollars a week. If they have no certification, uh, they get fifty dollars a week. Covers the time period between May fourth and June thirtieth. There are payroll attacks, payroll taxes associated with this. We can get reimbursed for the payroll taxes. Our share of the payroll taxes as well as the stipends. Uh, the finance officer and I estimated that this will be fifty-four thousand dollars in stipend payments and about eighteen hundred dollars in FICA. My very strong recommendation would be to do this once. So the rosters, the, the worksheets for who is qualified are due by June first. Then the state sends us a check and then we can issue the payments at the end of the program, which is June thirtieth.
And I guess the reason for this one-time payment would be to reduce the pressure on the, uh, finance office.
Correct. This is going to have to be run and tracked as a separate payroll. Correct. This is gonna have to be run and tracked as a separate payroll, um, so that we can easily provide proof when we have to go for the reimbursement.
And, and Julie, uh, do I understand correctly, it's not rank-sensitive?
That's my understanding.
Hmm, okay, because a lot of, uh, the higher ranks would have to put in more hours, uh, as far as presence. Uh, it, so I just, it kinda surprises me, but okay.
Yeah, this is, this is the way it came to us, so we either accept it the way it's been laid out, or we don't. Again, just to make sure you understand that the town does not have to do this. Um, but if you do accept it, this is the program. We can't change the stipends, we can't change the rules.
Julie, walk me through in terms of the money flow, the cash flow? We present this on June 3rd, uh, June 1st.
Right.
The state sends us money, and then we pay the employees, or are we paying the employees before the state sends us money?
The hope is that the state pays us the money before we have to pay the stipends.
I see. And what about the differentiation between, well, June 1st, uh, Chief Dronsfield was still here, but then Chief Dronsfield on June 15th decides he's leaving.
Right.
So how does that, and Chief, I'm just picking on you, because I'm looking at your face at the moment.
There are, if there are adjustments to be made, we either submit, so for example, if after June 1st, either the police or fire department hires somebody else, we submit a different, a new revised worksheet. Um, if someone leaves, or for some reason becomes unavailable to work, uh, then we owe the state money.
I see.
We're hoping that this doesn't involve all of that, but.
Yeah.
Hope not.
Uh, John, could we ask the two chiefs to comment on this particular proposal?
You read my mind. Go ahead. Chief Dronsfield. Are you there?
He's muted.
Oh.
Julie's muted.
Sorry about that. Um, you know, I'm happy that it came through for, for my guys. Um, there are a lot of towns that have been adopting hazard pay, if you will. Um, and I've been holding off on coming to the town for that because of, you know, the possible tax, the possible revenue shortfall. So I, I was glad that the governor came out with this. Um, uh, I know my people are excited about it, obviously. You know, I don't see any issues on our end. You have to meet a 30-hour, at least a 30-hour week requirement. So, between now and the end of June, uh, none of my people have put in for any vacation time that would be over eight hours. Uh, so they would all still fall within the 30-hour, uh, week requirement.
Chief Bennett?
I agree, um, a lot of my members know about it, they've been listening to, uh, all the news. Um, they're excited about it, and they're appreciative of it, um. You know, I can work with Julie, we've looked over all of our rosters, because we have members that are on other departments as well. Um, but it's only for one department, so they've signed, um, documents that I've made from the state of New Hampshire, saying that they want the, um, stipend or not, so we figured that out. Um, but now I think the biggest question for us was the the taxes that the town has to provide, and with the funding coming from the state, uh, I think that helps out the town.
Could I also ask? Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Mr. Bugby.
Could I ask, Julie, could you tell me in terms of the number of people that are affected by this, in terms of the police department, fire department, and anything else?
Sure, so it's nine, nine, uh, nine police officers. And I believe it's three full-time firefighters, six part-time, and then I think Joanne and I calculated it based on 13 on-call firefighters.
Okay.
We'd have 16 total at the fire department, um, four of my part-timers are full-time elsewhere, so they've signed a document saying that they're not gonna get the stipend. And that's what we've been trying to work through with the fire department, is trying to figure out who, um, who's gonna get it elsewhere.
I see. Thank you.
Does it cover anything for code enforcement or anything like that?
No, uh, a number of municipalities have asked whether it could cover code officers or health officers, and now there is a big push to petition the governor to have it include public works employees. Um, whether that'll happen or not, who knows?
You think there'll be another shot at this down the road?
No idea.
No idea.
No idea.
Is, is this coming out of the $1.2 billion that New Hampshire got?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Yes, as you may recall, towns were awarded, I think it was 32 million altogether. And this is, this is how they are distributing it.
I see.
The, the only, the only caveat, the only thing I just wanna make sure the board understands is, yes, this $50,000 is coming out of the 104, so we will then have quote-unquote "only" $50,000 or $54,000 to spend on everything else, unless they award us more money.
Exactly.
Um, I also had an opportunity to talk with Sue Caswell, in case any of you have seen that the schools were awarded $37 million out of the 1.25 billion, um, for K through, I think it's K through 12. Um, the school department, the Oyster River School District is getting just under $40,000 of that, but it can only be used for special education. So, as of right now, there is not a lot of money being handed to the school department. And they have similar concerns and issues that we do with budgets and, uh, revenue shortfall.
Okay, I, hearing all this conversation, I think it's a good use of funds, obviously our first responders are there on the line all the time. And I'd like to move forward, therefore I move to authorize the town administrator to execute all necessary agreements, the documents applied for the reimbursement of the first responder stipends, related payroll expenses, payments uh, to eligible employees will be made in one lump sum at the end of the authorized time period. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, we do have a second. Any further discussion at this point?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
No, Mr. Brown, are you in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Bugby, are you in favor of the motion?
I am in favor of the motion, Mr. LaCourse.
Okay, Mr. LaCourse, I am in favor as well. Thank you very much, motion carries. Thank you so much. Next item.
Thank you.
So, excuse while I just scroll through here. The next item, uh, is the memorandum of understanding with Oyster River Youth Association. As you know, we typically review this, um, make changes to it, and have it approved in March, maybe as late as April, but generally, we try to get it done in March. This year COVID happened, so it was just one of those things that got put on the back burner. Um, right now, under the, under the MOU, it expired at the end of March, and there is no evergreen clause in it. Uh, however, I know that Oyster River Youth has paid for, um, a certain amount of, um, fertilizer at, I know it's Little River Park, um, Mr. Bullock might be able to speak more to exactly what work has been done there, but I do know that they are acting as if the MOU is in place, although of course, they're not able to get on the fields right now, um, and have the kids participating in spring sports. Um, as you also know, we received this morning, um, an MOU from Maximum Velocity. I believe that it's similar to the one that he submitted last year. Um, it's nearly identical to the one that you have before you, but there are, there are some differences. So, again, because we typically would have taken care of this two months ago, I just wanted to get it in front of the board and see what your thoughts are. Um, if you decide to go forward with an MOU, my recommendation would be to change some of the language relative to how we cancel this or terminate the agreement. Right now, it's by writing with, I think, 30 or 60 days' notice. I would put some language in there, uh, quite frankly, to change that, make it easier for the town, if the town wanted to, uh, terminate the agreement.
Yeah, right now it says terminated by three months' written notice.
Right. I mean, I understand from the vantage of either ORYA or MV why they would want that length of time, but I, I'm not convinced at this time that that's the best thing for the town. And there's, there's really nothing in the agreement either that says we can terminate, let's call it for cause.
And that language should be in there.
Yeah. We might also. Sorry, we might also wanna think about an evergreen clause in case a situation like this ever comes along again. Sorry, Mr. Bugby.
Um, we have comments from the Rec Commission about this?
Uh, we do, I did get an email from, um, Mr. Kinberg this morning. Um, he is not in favor, and I would say it's, he personally is not in favor, because I know the Rec Commission has not had a meeting recently. He is not in favor of the increased fees that ORYA proposed. Um, and then he asked a question relative to Section 8, um, that there is no, um, compensation for this agreement on either part. I know that we've talked about this many times, typically around budget season when ORYA is giving presentations. The only connection that I can see right now between this MOU and the money that the town gives to ORYA for their programs is that because ORYA finally presented a formula to the towns for how they're deciding what they're gonna ask for in terms of contribution, we now get credit, if you will, for ORYA being able to use our fields. But even that's not really connected to the MOU. The MOU just says ORYA schedules anybody else using the fields, and they're responsible for a certain amount of maintenance. But the two are not really tied together.
Do we have any comments from Steve about this? Because he's the one that kinda has to deal with this issue.
Alright, so, they've done, they fertilized the multipurpose field and the baseball field this year that I know of. I don't believe they've done Massey Way or Stevens Field yet. And they should have. And that's where the problem I see is coming, because I've had conversations with them, that they wanna reduce the amount of maintenance they do on the fields this summer, and then start taking it on a month-to-month basis, because they're worried about money too. The issue is with those fields is right now, they are being used fairly heavily by a lot of townspeople are going there and playing soccer on them and using them, which is great, it's nice to see people out enjoying them, but if we don't continue maintaining them at the same level we've been maintaining them at, we're gonna lose them. So like, the baseball field, the outfield right now on the first baseline is starting to get overrun with dandy lions. And I need to address the dandy lions in the field, but I don't know if ORYA is gonna wanna pay for them, or if I'm gonna end up having to do it, so that's where we're at with that. So, in the MOUs, I kinda wouldn't mind it being taken, some of the maintenance taken away and put on us in the future. And whatever money we pay them that they're spending on maintenance goes into the highway budget for us to do.
So, I had a conversation with Matt Gloode the other day, and it was my takeaway from that conversation that they are not, at this time, saying that they're not gonna do the maintenance of the fields. They're just leaving it a bit open-ended, because obviously, as you can imagine, they don't have any revenue coming in, and they have no idea when they're gonna have any revenue coming in. So I think he was just holding the door open that they may need to, they may need to cut back if they can't put fall sports on the fields.
Yeah, that's what he said, but he was gonna start taking it on a month-to-month basis, starting in the next month or two.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to move forward with this MOU. I, I think we need it at this point. Uh, but also, I understand Steve's comments, we can't let the fields go to rot if we spent so much time digging them up to speed.
Yeah.
I, I think we're gonna have to go ahead and do what we have to do to maintain the fields independently of the Oyster River Youth Association at this time.
Okay.
Now, the question is, is can we get reimbursed as we continue to do this, and if they decide not to use the fields for some reason, or the season is totally canceled?
Well, again, they don't, we don't, we don't pay them to maintain the fields. They have agreed to do that, as they have with, you know, other agreements that they might have with Durham and Madberry, recognizing that they use the fields, and they also share responsibilities for the fields. But because we don't pay them to maintain the fields, I'm not sure how we would get reimbursed. I mean, if the board wanted to, to make that, tie this to the contribution that we give, that, that would be a different discussion.
Okay. I guess what I'm saying is that, um, obviously, at this point, Steve feels that he should be managing the fields, because he sees what's going on all the time, and
Right.
we probably should take more control of the, our fields at this time.
Right.
Also, a ton of lease citizens use it that are not associated with the Oyster River Youth Association, uh, which is what we wanted the park to begin with, as we established it. So, I do, I guess I agree with Steve that somehow in the future we'll have to tie some funds into his budget to maintain the field, no matter if we have a relationship with Oyster River Youth Association.
Okay. Um, okay, so, but you're also agreeing that I should put some language in here relative to termination of the agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
And evergreen as well.
Okay.
So, Julie, what are, what are we doing with them right at the moment? Right, right now, there's no agreement. Are they still scheduling stuff? There, there's nothing going on at Oyster River Youth, uh, at Little River Park, so.
Because, because they can't. They can't, both under the governor's edicts. And I believe at some prior meeting, the Select Board, I think it was a meeting in March, said there can't be organized sports on Little River Park, or at Little River Park.
So, their programs are in the spring and the fall, they don't do anything in the summer, correct?
I think that's generally true, yes.
So, why don't we put this off until maybe July or August? Till we know what's going on, because right now, if they're not using it, why have an agreement? Um, and that will give us the opportunity to allow Steve to do what he needs to do for the fields. I know we have to, we have to spend money on that particular thing, but it's an investment.
Right.
So, I'd rather wait, because if they're not using it, why sign the agreement if they're not even gonna use it for another, you know, two, three months?
Mr. Brown, you got a comment?
Alright, that's, I think that's a good idea. I'm wondering where are we, uh, or what do we do with this, this, uh, proposed MOU we just received from Maximum Velocity?
If you, if you decide that you want to take up the, even the, the discussion of an MOU at some point in the future, then we can just put that MOU on the agenda when we revisit this one. Okay.
And I would also like to direct those two proposals, one for Oyster River Youth, and the one from Maximum Velocity, to the Rec Commission to get their appraisal. What do they think, as a group, not just, you know, Mr., um, Kenberg?
Right.
I'm gonna agree with Mr. Bugby, so we'll move forward with that, see if we can get some information from the, uh, the committee members.
Okay.
And I guess we'll sit on it till we get more information.
Okay.
But I also, if Julie can put in that language too, so that that's something the Rec Commission can, you know, take a look at.
Yep.
So, treat it as a draft with respect to the evergreen clause and the termination.
Okay.
Did you happen to, excuse me, did you happen to see that Jeff asked if he was able to speak?
I'm sorry, what?
Um, he had, uh, clicked on chat and from Jeff Carlton, it says, "Am I able to speak?" Down at the bottom of the screen.
Uh... I, Denise, do you see that? It, it-
Joff had his hand raised.
Yes, he had his hand raised and then he wrote, "Am I able to speak?"
Oh. That's up to the board.
Yes, I'll take comment. Go ahead.
Well, okay. Oh, Joff, you need to wait.
There you go.
Go ahead, Joff.
I believe it. Uh, I think you guys have brought up some really good ideas, whether you go with Maximum Velocity or, uh, Oyster River Youth Association. I do like those clauses that you brought in. I will say that when it come to terminating something, whether, depending on either organization that you go with, I think you should put it in at the end of a season. So for example, in the fall, if there's soccer going on or something else like that, that season's generally gonna go from like the middle of August and end like the first week in November. And then in the spring, once Steve Bullock enables everybody to get on the fields, depending on the, the season, it would go from, you know, anywhere from March, April 1st, March 15th to the 15th of June. So just some input that I have for you guys on that one. I think that it's, it's wise to allow any organization to just fill that out unless they do something erroneous that they've gotta go because it's not there. I just, it's a suggestion I just wanted to make to you guys, but I, I liked where, where Julie was going on that and the suggestion that she did have.
Thank you, Joff. We appreciate it.
Uh, one last thing. I have been down at the field a lot over the past year, and I'm seeing a significant amount of dogs off leashes, literally defecating and peeing all over the playing fields. And that's not good for the grass at all, not to mention the liability on the town when you guys have, uh, leash laws up.
Thank you for that comment.
Thank you very much, and I'll unmute, or Julie can mute me. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments about that, Chief Dronsville?
He actually just made me aware of that maybe ten minutes ago. He sent Steve Bullock and I an email about it, so we haven't had a chance to address it.
Okay, I appreciate it.
This is the first we've heard of it.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll have to look into it.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? The sign, does that say no fouling and dog stuff?
It says you have to pick up after your dog.
Alright.
Mm-hmm.
But how about the urinating part?
Well, if you allow dogs, I don't think there's anything we can do about that.
Yeah.
I, I didn't know in terms of, I, I'm just, the point I'm trying to get at is, are they doing something the sign says they're not supposed to? Or are they just doing stuff that's not good for the field? That's two different things.
Well, if, the, go ahead, Julie.
Well, I was just gonna say, I'm pretty sure we say that you have to have your dogs on leash at Little River Park.
Okay.
Dogs off leash, they're doing something wrong. And then if they don't pick up after their dog, they're doing something wrong.
Alright. Well, the one thing that Jeff, Joff did mention is in terms of the urinating on the fields. If the sign doesn't say they can't do that, then how are you gonna stop them?
Right.
Uh, since the fields have been starting to be used a lot more, we've seen an uptick in the amount of dogs, the amount of dogs off leash. I said something last week to somebody about their dog being off the leash, and I was pretty much told, "I don't know who you think you are."
We're losing Steve.
And be on the leash. And they're pooping on the field a lot more, and then up on the, uh, up on the trails, they're, uh, leaving a lot more on the trails too.
Steve, if you encounter that, you, you need to call us. So we can come down and address it.
Yeah.
Now, the police get all these interesting jobs, don't they?
Yeah. Different times, that's for sure.
There's a lot of animals other than dogs that are urinating on that field, so.
Alright, I think we'll stop it at this point. Anything else on this subject?
Uh, just, I was just gonna mention, as you saw, um, Jim Banks sent a letter to the board. He asked that it be read during the meeting, but there's no requirement that the board do so.
Actually, I'd like the town administrator to read it in a minute.
Okay. Do you want me to do that now?
Yes, please.
"To Select Board Town of Lee, from James R. Banks, 36 Carpenter Lane, Subject: Oyster River Middle School. Two months ago, the district voted to authorize the construction of a $50 million school. That vote took place in what now has to be called the economy's best of times. Unemployment was, was at a record low and the stock market a record high. One week later, the COVID virus issue became widely known, and we are now in what has to be the economic worst of times in anyone's memory. The economic future is a vast unknown. Many businesses will not be able to reopen. UNH will have to adapt to operate on much less funding. Many families' finances will have been devastated due to sheltering in place. I believe that two years from now, we will have a better understanding of the reality of the local economy. Maybe at that time, we will come to the conclusion that the $50 million we voted in 2020 is no longer appropriate for the district's future school needs and its ability to pay for them. In view of this coming economic upheaval, I request that the Lee Select Board send a letter to the Oyster River Cooperative School District Board, requesting that they hold off the construction of the Oyster River Middle School for two years. That will allow a timely assessment of the district's needs in view of the local economy. While the future of Lee is unknown, let us remember that during the 1930s depression years, Lee's population dropped to about one-half. Many people were no longer able to earn a living. They were forced to abandon their property and leave. Could it happen again? Thank you for considering my request. Respectfully, James R. Banks."
Thank you, Town Administrator. Any comments from the Select Board?
Could we ask the Town Administrator to fill us in on the conversation she had with the Oyster River School District? Uh, from the last meeting, we asked her to contact them about, you know, revenue shortfalls and what they were doing?
Right, and as I had mentioned earlier, um, right now, they are only gonna get about $39,000. Um, and that's earmarked for special education. Um, at the time of my conversation, when I think was last week, uh, Sue Caswell was not aware of any other funding that was coming to the school, either by the state or by the federal government. Again, that's not to say that more money won't be forthcoming. They also are concerned about revenues. They are looking at spending and ways to cut back on spending. She's also concerned because, uh, both Madberry and Lee had experienced a large bump in, um, funding from the state, the adequacy grant, adequacy grant, uh, that that's not gonna be moving forward. She suggested that we could work with the school in terms of the timing of payments to them. And as you keep saying, as we all keep saying, we really don't know what our tax revenue situation is gonna be like, really maybe until August. So obviously, more conversations are gonna have to be had with the school in terms of if we are seeing a big drop-off in revenue, the school district is gonna have to share in that. One of the other things that the municipalities have asked of the governor is the ability to have the Select Board change a budget that has already been approved by the voters. Obviously, right now, you know, you don't have that authority. But the concern is that going forward, we are going to be basing tax rate in the fall on the budget that was passed, as Mr. Banks put it, when the economy was vastly different and things were good. So we still have not had word from the governor regarding that. So I would have to say that, uh, Ms. Caswell painted a fairly bleak picture, um, from the school district's perspective as well.
Well, I'm glad that they're, uh, gonna be taking some heat, just as well as we are in terms of if there's revenue issues. I just wanted to make sure they weren't thinking, "Well, we're, we're the school district. We, we'll get our, you know, $14 million this year from the Town of Lee, no matter what." And I just wanna make sure that they understand that if we don't get 14 million, they're not gonna get 14 million, so that's good.
Well, I mean, the problem with that again is unless the governor issues another edict or the school board changes what they do, the formula's the formula. And the formula isn't really based on, it isn't based on what might happen because of COVID-19. That's not to say that that can't change, but right now, we still owe them the full boat.
Just because we owe them doesn't mean we have to pay them. Hey, hey!
That's an interesting concept.
That would be interesting.
If I don't have the money in the, in the general fund to pay them, I'm not gonna pay them. Uh, they're gonna have to wait just like everybody else, and they're gonna have to adjust their budget accordingly. And I, I don't think that's gonna be any different for us as, you know, Madberry or Durham.
Yeah.
So...
So, let me throw something on the table for further discussion. I feel we should go on record by sending a formal letter to the Oyster River School Board, uh, the superintendent, um, about the fact I do not, um, mind going forward with Mr. Banks' suggestion at this point, but also to point out some of these issues that we just discussed. Uh, I think it's important that we get it on paper and they do receive it. So as we further deal with these issues, as Mr. Bugby had just said, if you don't have the money, don't have the money. Well, at least I wanna have written documentation. So if the board will permit, I'll ask the town administrator to come forward with a letter that states some of these basic concerns. Uh, so we have it as a, a record, a public record at this point.
I concur.
Mr. Brown?
Oh, I think it's a good idea. We might wanna see what, uh, what Madberry's gonna write.
Mm-hmm. I'll leave it up to the town administrator to construct a letter so we can see it, and we'll discuss it and move it forward.
Okay.
Can, can I ask, uh, if the chairman would allow us to ask the town administrator to contact, uh, Madberry and Durham to see their thoughts on this particular issue? Because I think a letter coming out from all three entities, possibly, would carry more weight than just something just from Lee.
Exactly.
I think we're in agreement on that, Town Administrator.
Okay, I will call them. Um, I see that Mr., Mr. Chief Dronsville had his hand up.
Please.
Yeah, to get back to Little River Park, we're not required to allow dogs there, correct?
Correct.
So, you know, if this is getting out of hand, like it sounds, uh, from texting with Steve Bullock and from, uh, Mr. Carlton, you know, if we can't trust these people to police themselves to the point where it's going to possibly start ruining the fields and cost the town money to maintain them, um, maybe we should look at not allowing the dogs, period.
I think Chief Dronsville makes a good point. Is a fine associate, but that if someone shows up?
Um, yeah, under a town ordinance, we could, or state statute, if the not, the dogs not on leash, we can cite them for that. But you're talking about a lot of enforcement activity to have somebody down there constantly to, to find out who, who's actually doing it.
Yeah.
And of course, somebody shows up and there's a police cruiser there, well, then they're gonna do what they're supposed to be doing.
Well, Chief, could you have one of your spare cruisers sitting there with one of those blow-up police dolls sitting in the driver's seat? You know?
Yeah, we could actually do that.
The other thing is, if people are having issues with Little River Park in terms of maintaining it, just direct them down to the town fi-, uh, the, uh, trails behind the library and stuff. They can go there instead.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that, you know, there are plenty of places that people can walk their dogs in town that if they're not going to pick up after their dog, it's not gonna be a cost to the town so much. It's still gonna be a problem, but it's not gonna be ruining fields that kids play on.
Have we ever talked about a dog park?
There is one in town. There's one right up by the Friendly Pets.
With a fence and everything?
Yeah, yeah, right out behind Friendly Pets at the, off a roof floor. They have a, a good-sized dog park there.
Well, before we move on to ordinance, I think the Chief, uh, Dronsville should think about the language at this point, but I'm not wanna move forward at this time. Maybe we should put something in the equiar specifying the issues that we've seen an uptick with respect to dogs, um, uh, running, but also defecating and whatever they're doing to town fields and let them know that these town fields need to be maintained. And obviously, feces and urine causes major problems to the field. And, uh, at this time, we're just asking you to be courtesy about having your dogs on the field. However, in the future, if this keeps up with the, the Board of Selectmen is gonna consider an ordinance not to allow any dogs on the field, or animals as such. So it's just a warning at this time. It's a good way to get it out.
Yep.
Yep. I'll put it out on our Facebook page.
I appreciate that much. What else you got, Julie?
Uh, that's it. Did you want to take any action on Mr. Banks' letter, or are we just filing it?
Well, actually, the, I'm taking on this is that I want you to write that letter to the Oyster River School District Board. And you can refer to this letter if you like. I'd like to postpone the actual, uh, if you wanna call it, the construction for two years. But I want other information put in there with respect to, as Mr. Bugby says, if you don't have the money to pay bills, we don't have money to pay bills.
Okay, so is it the position of the board that you wanna ask the school district to postpone the construction of the school?
I want you to check with the other towns, as Mr. Bugby, uh, said first, to see what their thoughts are and see where it's going, and come up with a draft.
Okay. Um, just a reminder that the ribbon cutting at the Oyster River Middle School is, uh, this Friday afternoon.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
There's only ten people allowed.
Well, technically nine.
Well, he said ten, so we're in violation.
Oh, gosh.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, next thing is the consent agenda. Is there any item that the board wants to pull out of consent agenda?
Um, one of the things I'm looking at is this Eagle Scout project thing.
Yep.
So I'm trying to find it. What's this? Forty-eight pages. Oh, my gosh.
It's towards the-
Towards the end?
Yep. Well, for some reason, my computer won't let me look at it.
So, where is this?
Where does he wanna do it?
Yeah, where is, I'm not seeing-
The master garden, the master gardener's garden at Little River, at, uh, the transportation.
Okay, alright.
Does somebody need to mute?
I don't know.
I had a lot of noise on that one. Do you want that pulled, or now that it's explained?
Um, as far as I can see, it's just something next to the garden. I'm not sure what it, cause there's like different designs. I'm not sure which one he's proposing, if he's proposing all of them or what, so.
He can take both.
I'm sorry?
He's proposing both.
So there's a roof design, shelving design, and then there's a big sign, so which is it?
One of, it's both. One of them is like a library.
Yeah.
That is like the triangle roof design one. And that'll have installation and other basic kits, and the plants are in the garden. And then there's another one that's gonna be like two six-by-six posts put in the ground, a little bit farther down, but still in the garden.
Yeah.
And it'll, it's not like, uh, it'll be the size of a four-by-eight sheet of plywood with a little roof over. It's more like a bulletin board and stuff on it. They wanted to stick there. I met with them two weeks ago, three weeks ago. Him and his father met up there and they put stakes in the ground in the garden, the, the grade stakes, and they got, uh, yellowish green ribbon tied to them so you could see about where they were gonna go.
So are you okay with this?
I, he had, he, he was a lot more, um, organized with what he wanted to do than that last scout that came before the board that wanted to exercise stuff. He had, the plans were well-brawn and he knew what he wanted to do. The kid was really well-spoken. Everything's far enough into the garden where it would never be a-
Everything's far enough into the garden where it would never be in my way.
Okay. I, I, I don't necessarily want to pull it, John. I just wanted some questions, so thank you.
Yeah, all right. Therefore, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented. Wait for a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, roll call vote, John.
That's right, Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. LaCourts, yes, okay, motion carries. I assume at this point, we'll get signature requirements. This is a lenient unfinished business, anything for the board?
I just have one comment, I guess. Um, I asked, again, can't remember whether it was this week or last week, but I asked my staff to start thinking about what we would need to do at town hall if we were to reopen. So we kicked a few ideas around and have been thinking about it. That being said, I, I mean, I'm not, certainly not pressuring to open up town hall to the public anytime soon. And really, nor am I suggesting that we bring everybody back to work all day at town hall. You know, I've been in constant communication with the two chiefs and Karen Rossi as health officer on this subject. And obviously, they're going to speak for themselves, but I, I don't think any of us are lobbying to go back to the way we used to do things anytime soon.
Have you got any complaints from the public?
No, none.
So I'm not enthusiastic to go back unless I start hearing complaints, all the two chiefs and town administrator and health officer about demanding that we go back. Then I'll take it into consideration. However, I'll take comment from the two chiefs. Chief Nemeth, are you there?
He's out, he's, he's moving today. So he was waiting in his U-Haul truck in the meeting, so he just signed out a minute ago.
I agree with Julie's assessment.
Thank you, Tom.
And I'd like to comment that the, recently, that it's been determined that the virus used to shed for two days before you got sick and now it sheds for up to five days before you get sick. So as you all know, those are the five days that you're contagious and that you don't know you have it. And they used to say seven days after the first symptoms and that before you can go out and then the three days with a fever. And now it's 10 days before you can go after your first symptoms. So they're finding out that it's more, it's contagious longer and lasts longer than they originally thought.
So my thoughts on this is to stay where we are as long as we can to protect the employees and also to protect the public as much as possible. Uh, so at this point, I'll just leave it that hopefully you'll have a, a plan at some time that when we decide to open, it does not have to be a mass front opening. It could be a phased opening, but I'll leave it to each one of you to come up with your own plans.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I ask a question? Julie, do you have information yet in terms of what we're requesting from the trustees of the trust funds for reimbursement to the general fund?
Uh, I know Joanne was working on that this week.
Um, and just in terms of a conversation with the board members, we need to get that to the trustees of the trust fund as soon as possible to give them time to reimburse us before the end of the fiscal year. So when are we planning on meeting again so we can do that? I assume we need, I assume we need to have, uh, the letter for us to sign and to approve, so.
Correct.
Let's go ahead and, um, I'll have Julie set up another meeting.
Okay.
It would depend in terms of when Joanne's ready to provide us the information too, so.
Right.
I just don't want to leave it till like June 15th and then say, oh, trustees, you got two weeks to give us some money. That's not enough time for them, because they're dealing with the same thing we're dealing with in terms of meetings, so.
I was going to say, we should have another meeting two weeks anyways.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. That should give the, uh, finance office enough time to respond.
Yep, does this day and time, Wednesday at 10:00 AM work for everybody or do you want to shift that around?
Day is Wednesday, what's the date of today? I'm mixed up.
Today is the 13th.
I have no problem on it, 10 o'clock sounds good to me. Mr. Bugby?
Uh, later in the day would be better, but the other thing I was considering is how many people are available at 10:00 AM during the day if they're working to view our particular meetings? That's the only other concern I would have, so.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not against having it in the evening, it's not an issue since we're still not on site at this point.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thought in terms of other people attending. Uh, I'm not sure if, you know, if I'm working, I'm not going to take time out from my work day to attend our meeting to see what's going on with town government.
So I would suggest, uh, town administrator, maybe we should consider going to like 6:00 to 6:30 our normal time.
Uh, I would request 6:00, but sure.
Okay, that sounds good. Let's see if we can shoot for something in two weeks at 6:00.
Okay, so.
Check with the rest of the group.
The 27th?
Yes.
Okay.
At 6:00 PM tentatively at this point and I'm asked the town, uh, you know, ask Joanne if she's going to have this material ready for that meeting.
Yep.
And if she doesn't, let us know.
Okay, so Denise has just let me know that a recent conversation she had with Joanne was that the trustees won't move the money until after June 15th, which I understand, but they also, I think, need some time to know what the dollar amounts are.
Correct, yes.
And do their end of it, so, okay. All right, May 27th, 6:00.
Sounds good.
And can we ask Julie to let the trustees of the trust funds know that that's what we're doing so they can anticipate that that correspondence will come from us? Those instructions?
Yep.
Thank you.
Exactly, thank you. Anything else for the, for the boards?
No, I moved to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.